Good evening, I will now call to order the Chesterfield Township Planning Commission meeting on September seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-four. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible)
I will call the roll. Mr. Miller is here. Mr. LaBelle?
Here.
Mr. Demink?
Here.
Mr. Leonard?
Here.
Mr. Taworski?
Here.
Mr. Klar?
Here.
Mr. Brocard is excused. Approval of minutes of the prior meeting, I will make a motion to approve the minutes of September third, two thousand and twenty-four. Support? Motion by Mr. Miller, supported by Mr. Demink. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Approval of the agenda, I will make a motion to approve the agenda as submitted.
Support.
Motion by Mr. Miller, supported by Mr. Renaud. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Public comments? If you'd like to make a public comment, please sign in at the...
Non-agenda.
Non-agenda. Not on the public hearings, Ms. Young. Please sign in at the table.
I will. Good evening, Janice Young. Actually, the non-agenda item was something I wanted to bring up to you guys. That language keeps getting changed in the agenda. In the past, it used to say, "Public comments on non-agenda items." That's been changed, because I thought we had talked about that before. I know with the regular board meetings, the comments ahead of the meeting are for agenda items. So that would seem like the opportune time for residents to comment on anything on the agenda when there's not a public hearing involved. Just wanted to state that out there. At the last meeting on nine-three, there was a petitioner here that presented a proposal to change the language in our zoning ordinance as it relates to gas stations. And the only benefit was to him and perhaps anybody who owns an electric vehicle or has alternate fuel needs. He cited some information from, I guess, the state of Michigan. They currently use what's called the Charge Up Michigan General Guidance, and they want to change it to the NEVI considerations. And that's what he was using for his argument, to have a gas station within a mile of the freeway that didn't have the intersections that our zoning ordinance requires. So I'm just asking this board to really take a look at that. I know you guys sort of seem to consider making the change of the zoning ordinance for the alternative fuel choices out there, which I can respect that and I can see the need for that. However, I don't think we should have to alter our zoning ordinance to make that fit. And if I understand this correctly, anybody with an electric vehicle, if they're not using natural gas or diesel fuel, they're not actually paying taxes for the roads anymore. So I don't know if that is coming as a change, but you know, to me, that's a factor in there, because our roads are being used by these vehicles and we're not, they're not paying for them anymore. So there's that in there. And if MDOT can bring things forward to give these guys incentives to do things, I mean, I think there needs to be more than what this township is, I guess, responsible for. And as far as the Take Five oil change on the agenda tonight, I just want to ask, on the Twenty-three Mile Road, there was no turn lane added during that construction to go into Meyer. So like, if you're going northbound on Grashit, you turn left and you want to turn right into Meyer, there was no, nothing added to help with the traffic flow there. And I was really kind of shocked to see that. And now the addition of a new business there just concerns me with extra traffic. Thanks.
Anybody else? Public hearings, we have two public hearings tonight. The first one is Viper Automotive LLC, Site Plan Number Two Thousand and Twenty-four-Dash-O-Nine, Special Land Use, M-one, point seven-one acres, east of ninety-four, south of Twenty-one Mile Road, Carrick Industrial Park, Twenty-one-Dash-Three. Parcel ID is one-five-zero-nine-three-two-one-five-one, O three-seven, address is four-six-four-one-three, Continental Drive. I'll make a motion to open the public hearing.
Support.
Motion by Mr. Miller, supported by Mr. Renaud. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ms. Osborne?
I'd actually like to defer to Mr. Palin for this one. Thank you.
Tonight in front of you is a proposed heavy automobile repair and collision shop. The Viper Automotive is currently occupying the building, which used to be Orkin. They're doing light repair in there now. They'd like to expand it to heavy repair and a collision shop. They are not proposing any exterior changes, so the site plan with it is the existing site plan. So the Planning Commission tonight is tasked with determining if that proposed use meets the eight special land use standards. And with that, I can answer any questions.
Thank you. Anybody here from Viper Automotive? Please come up to the podium.
Do I hold it the whole time? I'm a consultant for Viper Automotive, because they're a little intimidated by the process. With me having existing operations in Chesterfield, they've asked for my advice and my guidance on this. So what you say here, I will translate to them.
Thank you.
So they become compliant.
Thanks. Any questions from the general public, please? Sign in. Signing sheets on the table. And while you're doing that, we do have...
Do I stay here?
No, yeah, you can stay there, because they might...
Yes, James Locke. My only question is, they're changing the business there and that. Now, we know they're shutting down Rosso Highway, extending the airbase to landing field another thousand feet. Are they going to be extending the crash area another thousand feet also? How far is that going to extend into the industrial complex? Are we going to lose the business that they're changing over to, or what? We have any guarantees from the Air Force about how far they're going to extend that crash area?
Mr. Palin, do you have... Mr. Demink?
Do you want me to answer it? Only thing I've heard with regarding the Rosso and the extending of the runway, they're going to close Rosso Highway down. And this, this is like verbiage I haven't seen at all in black and white, but just what I've been told. They're going to close it down, they have to remove the canal along the roadway, they're going to move it north, and they're eventually going to make Rosso Highway come farther north into where the approach lights are, you know, the orange lights that do the approach, like the diamond like that, and then wrap it around. To my knowledge, to the best of my knowledge, and I mean, you can quote me on it, but that's all I know, is that the base is not buying any more property into that industrial park, because like Mr. King has his trucking business there on that street, and there's some others. But to my knowledge, there's no businesses that are going to be like condemned or where the government is going to take over it. But you know, you never know, it can change. But that's all of what I've heard on the development of that area, Mr. Locke.
Thank you, that's all I...
All right, sir. Anybody else? If not, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Support.
We have a mo... Mr. Demink?
I'm good for right now.
Mr. Renaud?
Just a couple of questions.
Might want to stay there.
I noticed on the plans, all we had submitted was the original plans from the building, and you've already stated that you're not making any external changes, but internally, are you going to be doing anything? If you're doing heavy repair, aren't you going to install some sort of bays or lifts or anything like that?
Presently, not. Fire marshal's been through the property to examine it, and he's given his okay on the procedure. Everything is going to be kept behind the gate, so the public doesn't see anything. The gate is already fabricated, so it is a privacy gate right there.
Okay, you addressed my next question, so thank you.
When you have, when you have vehicles out, it attracts unwanted attention. And the kind of vehicles that Viper Automotive's working on, they don't need the attention on that, because a simple mirror is going to be a thousand dollars if somebody just decides to take it off. It's a clean operation, they put everything behind the fence, and they need a little coaching. I have been coaching them, being compliant and being a good neighbor. And they look, they look forward to doing, continuing business in Chesterfield.
Thank you. Mr. Kair?
Yeah, I, for, I mean, this one was kind of confusing in regards to what, you know, we're really looking at. I mean, it's an M-one district, so it's, it's an appropriate use for an M-one, but I, I too was really struggling with how a repair shop, collision shop can function within that building without making modifications to the exterior. Yeah, so it was very confusing to me, too. So I guess maybe you can kind of walk us through how they currently do it. I mean, there's only one high bay door, so does everything, is it, did you just gut the inside and it's just like, you drive...
It's a white shell. It's a white shell. Have you, have you ever watched the movie Fast and Furious, where they, they put the body kits on cars? Basically, they're putting a lot of body kits on cars, so it's bolt-on, bolt-off, and replacing older fenders with modern carbon fiber fenders. So it's a lot of, like they rector said, taking things off, putting things on, and some people like spending a lot of money to make their car look nicer than it should.
Do they do painting or anything?
They, they do do painting, and the paint booth has been approved by the, the fire marshal, from, from the best of my knowledge. Everything is self-contained, and everything is, so if you drove by the road, you're going to see a beautiful building right there. They need a better landscaper, I keep on telling them that. I've been getting at them about the weeds and the cracks right there, but everything is behind the gate, and everything is inside the building, self-contained.
So they store building, are they store, store vehicles outside, then? Behind the building?
Behind the building.
So outdoor storage?
It's temporary, it's temporary outside storage. So it's, it's, this, you don't make any money with something sitting there, so it has, it's in and out within a week or so. There's no permanent carcasses.
Yeah, the only reason I ask is, if it's outdoor storage, I just didn't know if it triggers anything with R-one-B being to the east, if it triggers any screening requirements or anything like that.
There is screening right there, where you, if you drove by, you couldn't see what they were doing in any way.
So as a use standard of the heavy repair, they're not to do any outdoor storage? What they're doing is essentially parking the vehicles till they take them inside. So there's kind of a distinction there. It's not practical to have a heavy repair shop and not have a vehicle parked outside. So we're talking about scrap tires, scrap parts, that type of stuff is not allowed to be stored outside. So they will be, there is, I can't see the number on the screen, it's a little small, but there is a significant number of parking spaces where they can park cars until they bring them in, but that portion is screened from the road with the existing gate.
Regarding debris, there is a dumpster on site, and there is a recycler that comes on property once a week to remove all debris. They, they are lacking a landscaper. They, they need a little better landscaper, but we're getting them there.
Okay, understood. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Taworski?
I too was a little confused about what they were asking for, so I defer to the rest of the board, too.
Thank you. Mr. Klarowski?
Yeah, I have no pro, I have no problems with the proposal.
Thank you. Mr. Leonard?
I'm good. Thank you.
Mr. LaBelle?
Just one quick question, please. Back to storing the cars outside in the parking spot, in their parking lot spots, will those, will those cars have license plates on them?
There is no cars after hours in the outside parking spots in front of the gates.
Behind the gates?
Behind the gates.
Where you have the cars that are waiting for their turn to come inside the building?
Chances are, chances are, there's not going to be license plates on all of the vehicles. In the industry, what happens is people will buy cars, dealers will have, dealers will have cars bought, and they'll have modifications done for the vehicles prior to sale. So their base business is dealer business, where a dealer wants a car modified. So they're not doing heavy crash vehicles. They're, they're, ninety percent of the vehicles that arrive on the site are movable on their own accord. So tow trucks are not dropping off vehicles. But regarding a license plate, as a dealer myself, I do not leave my dealer plate on a vehicle when it's at a facility. So all unlicensed and unregistered vehicles, but they will be titled in a dealer's name, are behind the fence.
But it's still outside storage at that point, then? That's the reason?
Well, it's...
That's why I'm asking, that's why I'm asking the question.
Regarding outside storage, it's only temporary.
Licensed vehicle, it's outside storage.
It's, on a first-in, first-come, none of the vehicles are there more than ten days. So define storage or long-term parking. I'm actually in the storage business in Chesterfield, Michigan. We have a few facilities. So when we talk about storage, I'm seeing your point right there. But these are customer vehicles. Same thing as if Big Jim has a vehicle sitting over at his property on Twenty-three Mile, and it takes ten days to get parts, some of those vehicles are not licensed. Same as a lot of the body shops or the auto repair shops right there. It's hard to get a vehicle that's non-running or needs work done to be licensed to go on the, on the road. But you don't make any money by storing or warehousing vehicles. And with the limited space, the small footprint that they have there, they can't warehouse the multiple vehicles right there. So if they need outside storage, I'll rent them some outside storage at some of our facilities.
Thank you. I have no questions. So I would entertain a motion. I will make a motion to approve special land use two-zero-two-four-dash-zero-nine Viper Automotive for the following region, reasons. It's harmonious with the surrounding neighborhood, will not be hazardous to vehicle or pedestrian traffic, will not have noxious or noise or dust, no change to the building, will be harmonious with the physical and economic aspects of the adjacent property, is necessary for the public convenience.
Support.
We have a motion by Mr. Klarowski, supported by Mr. Leonard. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. You're all set to go.
I have one more comment. We really enjoy doing business in Chesterfield. We really enjoy working with other people in Chesterfield, so thank you.
Thank you. Public hearing number two is Veris Development Group Site Plan Two Thousand and Twenty-four-Dash-Thirteen, Special Land Use, C-three, one-point-five-one-three acres, north side of Twenty-three Mile Road, east of Sherburne Drive, parcel ID one-five-zero-nine-one-four-four-zero-zero-zero-four-six. Address is three-four-eight-seven-five, Twenty-three Mile Road. I'll make a motion to open the public hearing. Motion by Mr. Miller, supported by Mr. Renaud. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ms. Osborne?
Thank you. So Commissioners, oh, sorry. There we go. Tonight in front of you is a proposal for a coffee shop with a drive-through. Due to the drive-through, this is a special land use. So tonight, and through your discussions, your task is to review the plans, decide whether the site plan meets all zoning ordinance standards and their intent as applicable, and then also to review the narrative that the applicant has provided, explaining how the project complies with the standards for a special land use. The Planning Commission must find that all of these standards for a special land use have been met to grant the special land use approval. So we do have a review here from Jill and I dated September eleventh. The first page provides just kind of an overview of updates to the site plan that are needed and some items that you may want to focus on in particular. At the bottom of page two, we get into the meat of our report. As I noted, this is a restaurant with a drive-through, twenty-five-hundred-square-foot restaurant is proposed. They are also proposing an outdoor dining patio, and the site is located on the north side of Twenty-three Mile Road. The site does have access from Twenty-three Mile Road already. The proposed plans meet all of the dimensional district standards already. You can see those at the bottom of page two and the top of page three. When we get into the use standards, since there is a drive-through, the standards for fast food restaurants are applied to this use. As you can see, the proposal is compliant with most standards. A couple that you may be interested in discussing further will, would be whether or not the site has adequate ingress and egress to handle the traffic that's anticipated, in particular thinking about the queuing area and if there's sufficient space for the cars that are expected. And then at the bottom of page three, we also call out that devices for electronically amplified voices should be directed or muffled to prevent any noises from being audible at any lot line. The speakers are facing a residentially zoned property to the west, the property's owned RM-two. The applicant has provided a sound study, which talks about the speakers and how they have automatic volume control. I'll also note that the performance standards have a maximum noise level of sixty decibels during the day, fifty-five at night, and the sound study appears to meet those maximum levels. The bottom, excuse me, the top of page four gets into the building materials. I'll note here that our review, the commentary here does not match what's in your packet. So this is something that we'll want to clarify from the applicant. Our review was from plans that were dated August first, the plans in your packet are from June. Terms of our review, the applicant is, falls a little short, or the proposal falls short in terms of the building materials, proposing forty-seven-and-a-half percent brick, twenty-five and point-two percent Nitsahah fiber cement panel, and the rest with glass paneling. Terms of circulation, the applicant's proposing a five-foot concrete sidewalk that extends from the eight-foot wide concrete sidewalk that's along Twenty-three Mile Road, and then this continues into a ten-foot wide sidewalk that goes up through the middle of the parcel, past the building, and ending at the dumpster. The site does require major screening, since it's zone C-three, it's surrounded by M-two, sorry, RM-two zoning to the west, C-three to the east, and R-one-B to the north. So it does need that major screening to the west and to the north. The applicant's proposed a hundred-and-fifty-four-foot green belt and stormwater catch basin to the north, and a six-foot green belt with twelve screening trees to the west. However, these do not meet the major screening requirements, and so they have indicated that they're planning to seek a variance for those standards. The tree preservation requirements have been met, as have all the landscaping, the parking landscaping, frontage landscaping, and the Clear Vision Triangle. In terms of lighting, the photometric plan includes the fixtures that show that they meet the ordinance standards. However, the light poles that are proposed are twenty feet tall, which is taller than the building and not permitted. However, the Planning Commission can modify the requirement if the applicant can demonstrate that there are no negative impacts to having this higher lighting. All the lighting levels requirements have been met. In terms of parking, this is at the bottom of page four, the app, the inform, excuse me, the applicant has provided information that shows that they need thirty-eight spaces, parking spaces. They've proposed thirty-one and plan to landbank seven of them on the north end of the property. In order to landbank them, the applicant must submit substantial evidence that the parking needs are less than what's required by the ordinance. Additionally, the landscaping plan shows that the, some of the parking lot trees are located where this landbanked parking is also designated. So the, we recommend that the trees be moved further north so that the landbaking space can actually be set aside for that and not have to move trees if the parking becomes needed. The dimensional requirements for parking spaces have been met, as well as for the ingress-egress drives. Bollards are proposed, two of them will be used as signposts for ADA parking, and the other five will be located in the trash receptacle. They meet the dimensional requirements for bollards. However, the materials are proposed to be painted, so the applicant will need to revise their proposal so that they're painted and painted in, excuse me, not painted and are earth-toned color. A fence is also proposed in the front yard for a dividing area between the patio and the parking area, circulation area, and the fence meets all the requirements for fencing. Bicycle parking has been provided, they provided two spaces. The racks are on the east side of the building, near the sidewalk connecting the site to Twenty-three Mile Road. The connecting sidewalk is a little bit nearer than it needs to be, it's five feet wide instead of the required six, and the proposed bike rack is also just slightly shorter than the required thirty-six inches at thirty-five inches. The applicant has not provided a specific area on the plans for loading or unloading areas, however, they've noted that deliveries and loading operations will occur off-hours. So the Planning Commission may wish to discuss with the applicant how deliveries are made and ensure that that space is provided if needed. Circling back to the drive-throughs, the drive-through has fourteen spaces provided, which is required for coffee shops. The ordinance does require that ten of these stacking spaces be before the menu ordering, order board, and four are provided. So the applicant, or the Planning Commission may wish to discuss with the applicant, again, about circulation and stacking space and what's required, or what will be adequate. The stacking lanes also require a landscape setback that's ten feet wide, a six-foot wide setback has been provided, and again, the applicant is looking to seek a variance for that. In terms of trash receptacles and bollards, there's a trash receptacle at the north part of the property, north of the building. It's going to sit on a twenty-foot-by-ten-foot concrete slab, has two double gates with steel wire with black vinyl PVC coating. The enclosure walls are six feet tall and composed of split-face black CMU. The plans note that the, the block will be painted, and so we just want to point out that that will need to be revised so that the materials are not painted. That's all I have for my review, and I am happy to answer questions you may have.
Thank you. Is the applicant here? Please come up to the microphone. As he's doing that, I just wanted to, we received two letters of opposition, one from Wyatt Hood and one from Alexander Zellany, both lived in the sub adjacent to it. Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Reed Cooksey with Stonefield Engineering and Design. I'm here with the applicant. Veris Development Group as well. Ms. Osborne did a great job summarizing the site, so I don't have much more to add, other than we're excited to bring a new, well-liked use to the, the community. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Does the general public would like to speak? Please go up to the microphone, sign in at the table. Three-minute time limit?
And one more thing, if you would like to speak, please go sign up before you speak. You know, kind of stay in line and sign up, if you would, please, so we can get through this quickly. Thank you.
Maurice Van Pettigan, I'm the Vice President of Wellington Place Estates, the subdivision that is north... that is northwest of the location where they're proposing to build. We were here over a year ago when Culvers was going to build in the front of our subdivision. We requested that a traffic study be done at that time. I'm not aware that any traffic study had been done at that time and we're requesting the same for their proposal. That intersection is highly dangerous and adding a coffee shop of that magnitude and the hours that they get the most significant business would make it even worse. And it's even worse now because of where Altman is and where their driveway is. The business before this that was in there was a landscaping business. So you'd get two, three trucks a day going in and out of there. Now you're going to have several hundred cars going in and out of there a day in an already congested area. I don't see a good way of correcting the traffic problem there by adding a light or doing anything like that because of all, everything's kind of been added on over time. So Kroger's entrance is offset from our entrance, the proposed entrance is offset from Altman's entrance, so there's no good way to put in a light. The only other proposal I would have would make the egress from their location right turn only, which would solve a lot of the problem in that area. If, if it's a left turn out of there, you're just waiting for a head-on accident. It's already congested enough. I propose that they do a traffic study and prove that they can, they can support the kind of traffic that flows through that area, especially seeing a similar effect on 23 Mile closer to Grashit where cars are stacked out on the 23 Mile and it makes that a nightmare. If you do that in that area, it's not going to be a good thing, especially considering their high volume hours are to and from school hours and also when people are coming home from work, which would just make that, the likelihood of a very bad accident even greater. That's all I have. Thank you.
Janice Young. While I do sometimes visit the Starbucks over on 23 by Lowe's, it is not an ideal location. I've used it as an example of bad planning in the past and I've actually stopped going there as much since they closed the inside because it's so impossible to get in and out of there. It's not, I don't feel safe going in and out of there. As far as this site goes, you know, there's, they're asking for a lot of variances I see coming. The screening, the light poles are too tall, I mean, things that, you know, she mentioned up there. This is a classic example of where we issue variances to make a business fit. And I've heard you guys say it before with the Sheetz gas station, that you issued the variance, variance because it would cause a hardship and undo hardship to the business because it's not their fault. Well, if the residents don't really want this, we already have a traffic problem on 23 Mile Road, when does the hardship on the residents become an issue? When, when does that get taken into, into account on any of the decisions that are made? Like the gentleman before me said, I printed out my own map to look at the roads where Altman is and I, I shop at Kroger. I avoid Meyer because I don't like that intersection before the construction. So I don't know how cars are supposed to get in and out of Kroger as it is, off of Altman, out of the Kroger gas station, which has been added, you know, over the years. There's just a lot going on right there. My other thought or question, is the other location going to close? Maybe that's the thought here or something, but I don't know. Anyway, that's it. Thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else? If not, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing. Yeah, motion by Mr. Miller, supported by Mr. Renell. All in favor?
Aye.
I'll bring it back up to the commission. Mr. DeMink?
Okay, yeah, that intersection is nuts with Altman, Krogers, and everything else. The people that spoke about the Starbucks at 23 and Grashit, I come through there, I talk to the guys at the PD, cars are backed up on 23 causing all kinds of problems. So yeah, I've got a major problem with that one, but there's nothing I've been told we can do on it. There is a, if you guys have been through page 12 on our handouts, there is a review from the police department. I'll just read it out. "PD has concerns about the new proposed Starbucks site plan. First, we would strongly recommend that any left turns out of the driveway be prohibited due to the location given its close proximity to the intersection of 23 and Altman. It's a center turn lane and that vicinity is already in high demand due to the Kroger Fuel, Kroger Shopping Plaza. This would greatly lessen the chances of any head-on. Left turn crashes stemming from customers attempting a left turn out of Starbucks and colliding with other motorists on 23. Secondly, we would encourage that the drive-through lane be lengthened where possible towards the north end of the lot in order to accommodate more vehicles in the drive-through line stack." The Starbucks sister location, like I've earlier stated, often sees numerous backup cars at this drive-through lane which spill out on the 23 Mile Road. Well, traffic safety recommendations will help keep motors and pedestrians safe. I agree with a lot of those comments. I go to Krogers, like Mrs. Young. Even pulling out of Krogers and making a left to go westbound on 23 is taking life in your own hands and I go at off-hours, not at peak time. I'm not a coffee drinker, so sorry Starbucks, but I never had drank coffee, especially with my career, never drank coffee. I'll have a Pepsi, but don't drink coffee. I have some in, you know, we had problems when Culvers was going to go in there. The residents in that sub were stacked in here. So this isn't on the Shellborne Street going in, so it's a lot over. So it's, you know, it's no effect to the people over on Shellborne. I don't know, there's a lot going on over there. Traffic accidents around here are getting worse by the day. 23's got a lot of traffic. I don't know, I'm up in the air. I mean, it's just, and I totally agree with what the PD put, making a left-hand turn out of there is, is bad. It's, it's suicidal. I mean, we've all gone, those that live around here that go to Krogers, pulling out of Altman or going to Kroger Fuel, there's too much going on there, especially then you've got Kroger Plaza, you've got Taco Bell, Kentucky Fried Chicken, Flagstar Bank, Combe Governments' Credit Union, whatever else is along there. You know, four, two lanes of traffic east and westbound of center turn lane. I don't know. I'm not too keen on it, so that's where I stand.
Thank you. Mr. Renell?
Just a couple of things, yeah. The recommendation from the Chesterfield Police Department, I fully support actually. In fact, one of the things I would probably insist on is absolutely to be a no-left turn out of the complex there. The irony is I'm not a coffee drinker either, at all. But the Starbucks that's currently located on the south side of Grashit, just past the expressway there next to Lowe's, the traffic there is terrible. And when I first heard about this, I actually liked the idea because I think we would now have a Starbucks on each side of 23 and I think it'll lessen up the traffic there, which will more than likely help the traffic overflow on the 23 Mile Road. But my recommendation would actually be, again, in line with the police department's requirements, is I'd like to see that stacking lane actually go further back under the property line to ensure that you have absolutely no backups whatsoever on the 23 Mile Road because that would be a problem. I would probably also recommend some sort of deceleration lane turning into the complex itself, which would help tremendously. And yeah, those would be my recommendations for that.
Thank you. Mr. Carr?
Yeah, I would say from a, first from a special land use, I don't, I don't see this being an issue being on that site. I think it's a decent fit. But what I am in particular is, you know, is, you know, ordinance compliance. So, so in regards to, I guess, you know, what my predecessors just said, yeah, I think that's kind of a no-brainer in regards to the no-left turn and I also do believe it's kind of a no-brainer with, you know, extending your stack of lanes to the north. It didn't make any sense why you would put parking and then you would have parking to the north and then you'd have, so people whoever do, do park in the north got to cross through a drive-through lane to get to the building. I thought that was pretty odd. So I think those two points, you know, have been covered already and, you know, I think it's good to reinforce. But back to the, the ordinances themselves, there are some concerns. You know, one in particular, like, you know, the easy one is the lights, right? There's no reason why we can't stick within our ordinances of the lights. I mean, typically they don't go above our building. Your building's 18 feet, find an 18-foot pole. So I think that needs to be reinforced. I don't see why, there needs to be a variance on that. In particular, the screening, that I think is, I did hear that you guys were planning on going to zoning and obviously zoning has the ultimate authority, but from a planning perspective, I think screening does have to be applied at least to the west lot. The 158, you know, you got a pretty big buffer to the north. So I, you know, I think, you know, tastefully landscaped, I think that'll, that'll be, that'll work well. But I do think that the screening to the west does need to be addressed. I think the noise study, you know, definitely helps, but, you know, because the adjacent property is residential, I don't foresee anyone using that as residential ever in my lifetime. I think it'll probably end up staying vacant because it's, you know, those two sites are pretty unusable. But unfortunately, it does, you know, adjacent to a residential property, so we do have to enforce that because there might be somebody that wants to build eventually on there and it is residential. So I think that needs to be addressed. The deliveries, you know, I am a stickler on this one too. Yeah, everybody always says that things are, you know, always off-hours, but the reality of it is that it's not always off-hours. You know, I, I do think deliveries, you know, do need to be at least identified on your, you know, on your plan of where the, the planned truck is going to be staged. I assume it's just going to be adjacent to the building and then you're just going to roll. You did do the truck study, which I, I do appreciate. A lot of people don't do the turning radiuses, so I, I do think that was great that you did that and that all made good sense. The dumpster material, you got CMU. Typically the, you know, we like the, the dumpster material to be similar to the building material, you know, so that it looks like it's, you know, it's, it's, you know, cohesively, you know, designed. So I think that that does need to be looked at and, you know, just to add some, again, aesthetic characteristics, so it's uniform across the site. So I think that does need to be looked at as well. And then on your elevations, I, I know Giffords Webster did a great job doing their review. You know, we're definitely, as a planning committee, we're, you know, we're much more open to alternate materials, but in particular the drive-it, it's not as hardy of a product. But in this case, particularly though, said it was painted. And so that is definitely something that would have to be addressed as an alternate because we do not allow any painting as Ms. Osborne had clarified on the, the bollards and on the CMU wall. Definitely not for the buildings though. We would definitely need a, an alternate product. Or the product, but it'd have to be impregnated with a manufacturer, you know, factory finish so that it's integrated into the product itself. You know, I know traffic studies always come up. You know, I, I'm, I'm always for traffic studies. I will say that the traffic study will come back that they're perfectly fine. So it's 23 Mile Road, it's five lanes wide and it's going, it can handle much more volume than what it currently does, although as residents, we might not think that. But the way they do their traffic studies, it's going to come back acceptable, but, you know, if the rest of the commission, you know, is interested in having the traffic study done, it's always a good thing to check the box. You know, especially for the residences, the residents that have that concern. So, you know, for the rest of my committee, I would be, you know, open to having a traffic study done, but I'm quite confident it's not going to be an issue at all. So I think outside of that, I think I'm good, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Jaworski?
Yeah, I do love my coffee. Starbucks ranks up near the top there. To second that as far as traffic study, you need to tell them the public, if it comes back and says it's acceptable, do we accept that? I put more weight on the Chesterfield PD. I mean, obviously if they're going to chime in on this issue and make that kind of statement and recommendation, I'm going to have to follow that. I'm also going to say no variance on anything. I mean, the building materials, lighting poles, screening, I mean, that should all be followed to meet the neighborhood. As far as what the site can be used for, I, you know, I don't really support the Starbucks because of the traffic, but I mean, really what else could go in there? Outside of that, I mean, I'm a fan of Starbucks. I agree the location is not ideal, but I don't know what business could go in there that would make it ideal. So that's my point.
Thank you. Mr. Klonowski?
Yeah, biggest issue is, is if that backs up and starts flowing onto 23, I think there's more, they need more queuing and more stacking in that site. And that's going to have to be addressed because we do not want another situation like it now exists on the other site. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Leonard?
Yeah, pretty much everything has been mentioned. Few of the things that I was going to bring up have already been talked about, so I concur with what's been said. Thank you.
Mr. Lebel?
First of all, there's a lot of items that need to be addressed this evening. I am not comfortable at all with taking, making any kind of a vote or taking any kind of a vote for yea or nay this evening. Secondly, and I don't remember exactly which gentleman was here last time for the other one, but, and I have brought this up to the residents many times, I voted yes for the other Starbucks. And at that time when the presenter was making his presentation, he guaranteed us, he said that there will be no cars on 23 Mile Road and we have a terrible problem there. That has to be resolved. I, I am not going to vote yes for anything if there's any chance of somebody being hurt or killed on 23 Mile Road because of cars being stacked on it. There are opportunities for you to do something different with your, with, with your drive, your drive around with the detention pond, the, the additional parking, things of that nature to get more cars on your property. If you can prove that to me, then I'll, then I will give you a yes vote. Secondly, I do think we need a traffic study. It's been requested on many, many of our projects and I think we need to have a traffic study just to have it in our file. Thirdly, the package that we were given, if you can just give us a synopsis of what the materials really are on the, on the building, because the package that we were given says that there's, there's quite a bit of ephesus on the building, there's painting going on, things of that nature. But Ms. Osborne had something different than what, what was presented because of the dates. Can you give, just tell us what is actually going on here? That's it, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you. I agree with all of our, my commissioners, especially with the police department, no-left turn out of there, a traffic study, and more stacking if it's possible. Otherwise, I'll be a no vote too. So with that, I would entertain a motion. Answer the questions.
Yeah, I'd love to. Yeah, I wrote down quite a bit of notes here, so hopefully I can, I can hit them all. So I guess obviously everyone's biggest concern is, is stacking in the traffic. And if, if we could, I actually have a, an exhibit I'd like to pass out that shows the, the site over by 94 and 23, just to, just to have a little comparison for everybody. So I'll wait for you guys to get this before I kind of explain what this exhibit is showing.
Thanks.
All right, so what you guys are looking at is an aerial photo of that, of that site in May of this year. So a couple, couple of months ago, so we can all agree that, that not much has changed from the, in the, in the last few months with, with the operation of this site. What you'll notice and what I noted on here is the length of stacking that that site potentially has. From the pickup window all the way to the right-of-way, they have 270 feet of stacking. Per your ordinance, a stacking space is 19 feet long. So, you know, you guys can, we can do the math, it's less than 14 spaces until, and that's if they're bumper to bumper before a car is hanging out in the road. So that, that itself would not meet your ordinance. It would block multiple parking spaces. It sounds like they don't allow indoor pickup anymore. So we can all agree that that is a, a bad condition and one of the reasons for this location is to take some of the pressure off that location. What our site does is we have 280 feet of stacking just in our stacking lane alone and then there's an additional 295 feet before you'd ever get to the right-of-way. You know, that is over 30 cars that could potentially be on this site before you would ever impact 23 Mile. The MDOT standard for stacking from a pickup window to their right-of-way is 400 feet. So we're nearly 200 feet over that requirement in general. So while I know you guys are, are very cautious about your stacking, we are very confident that we meet not only Starbucks standards, we meet Chesterfield standards, we meet MDOT standards for the stacking on our site where not only will all our stacking maintain, be in the lane itself, but if for some reason there is additional stacking that would be required in our, on the lane, we have ample space for that. We do not anticipate that. That has not happened. Starbucks, their new, with the new systems involved, with the new mechanisms they have in their stores, their throughput times, they need 12 spaces, 14 is optimal and that is exactly what we're showing here. So I just wanted to kind of give you that exhibit for- So I just wanted to kind of give you that exhibit for, for kind of what we're, what we're showing here. As far as access to the site, um, you know, again, I will uh, agree with uh, Mr. Carr that uh, you know, the twenty-three mile road, you know, we can do a traffic study here. The capacity of twenty-three mile road, the level of service that it's gonna have, our site is not gonna have any impact on it. This is a commercial corridor. As well as, you know, our site, we, to have any sort of business here, whether it's a drive-through or not, we're gonna have to have the entrance in its location. We have to go to MDOT for that entrance. They will determine whether or not any sort of restricted left-in, left-out is required based on the current conditions of that road. We have to get that permit. We cannot construct this site, we cannot build this site without going to them for that permit. Um, and they will be the ones, because it is their right-of-way, that, that dictates it. I, I fully respect what the police chief is stating there. Um, no one is more particular about their roads than MDOT. I can confirm, we've done hundreds of sites all over, over the state, and they, they review them with a fine-tooth comb. Let me see here, a couple other, oh, as far as the ordinance requirements, um, you know, we are requesting some variances. We feel that we have some, some solid hardships, especially for um, some of the uh, buffer zones, things like that, encroachments. We have a, a fairly narrow lot, a budding residential, so there's a couple setbacks in there, um, that, that make it difficult to meet. As well as, you know, we, we could meet a side yard, uh, ten-foot buffer zone, but we felt, and we talked with the fire marshal about this, that widening and having the bailout lane for the drive-through was, was imperative to allow their trucks to adequately circulate, allow the pedestrians, or allow the vehicles on-site to circulate the site without having to back up. Uh, we have a very clean uh, circulation on-site, um, for that. So we, we do feel that there's some hardships there, and we will be going to the zoning board of appeals in order to uh, to get those hardships looked at. As far as the uh, the light pole, um, our reasons for going for the twenty-foot pole, that's a pretty standard pole height. Um, you know, how the ordinance is written is it has to be lower than the, the height of the building. Technically, in this zone, we could go to a twenty-five-foot building, so if we did that, we could have a twenty-five-foot pole. We're going with a twenty-foot pole in order to um, have a more uh, even lighting dispersion across the site. A lower pole kind of creates larger intense pockets on the site, and we're really looking for a nice dispersion of that light. It's two feet, um, most of them are, are fairly set back. It, it's um, you know, not gonna be a detriment to the site, but ultimately, you know, we're not seeking a variance for that, as is noted in the packet. It's something that you, as the planning commission, can approve. So, um, that's a request we are making. If for some reason you guys still don't feel that that's acceptable, you know, we would be willing to redo the study with an eighteen-foot pole. That's, that's uh, something we can do there. Um, more notes here. So, as far as the building materials, I know that was a, a big talking point. I'm, I'm sorry for the confusion. Nothing will be painted. I, I think there was some confusion on what we were calling out with Sherwin-Williams. Everything is gonna be stained or built into the, the material itself, so it was never intent to be painted. Uh, we own and operate all of the stores themselves, and having a painted facade is, is a nightmare for, for operations. That's not something that we would be uh, looking, looking to do, so I apologize for any confusion there. And then with the, the breakup of materials, you know, uh, we have the brick, we have the uh, the boards, and we have um, the composite material. Really, the idea is the composite material is towards the uh, the top of the building, and it gives it a nice break in how, how, how it looks, you know. The uh, you can see the elevated, colorized elevations on there. You know, we feel that it's a very clean look, it, it breaks everything up. If we extended that mason room material all the way up, it would, it would really get a bland uh, feel to it. So, it's not gonna be painted, it will be uh, stained and integrated into the material itself. And we do feel that it's a very, very clean look, and, and with the intent of meeting the, the ordinance there. Make sure, a lot of notes here, guys, sorry about that. Um, dumpster materials, uh, you know, again, the intent is to match the, the quality of the material on there. I know we, it'll be stained split-face block, um, that, that matches the uh, the uh, building itself. And then, uh, I don't know, am, am I missing anything? I'm, I think I, I think I kind of covered everything, but if not, I'd be happy to answer those questions. Oh, deliveries, sorry about that. Yeah, um, delivery. So, the idea is, when we say to off-hour delivery, um, and Starbucks is the user here, they have a much more compressed hours of operation than most fast-food users. You know, it's not a Taco Bell, which has potential twenty-four-hour operations. You know, while they peak in the morning, um, you know, they do close around eight or nine at night, depending on the location, and that gives ample time for the employees and the deliveries to occur. Um, we've all been to a Starbucks or know what a Starbucks is. They don't require large uh, semi-truck deliveries, they're not getting large equipment delivered. Um, you know, everything there is, is delivered by small box trucks and Sprinter vans that are very efficient. You know, we, we can definitely show on the plans where we anticipate that they would stop and load. Generally, they pull off to the side, um, as Mr. Carr mentioned, they pull off to the side. Um, in front of the building, they unload the uh, the couple boxes, and they're on their way. Um, and then, you know, operationally, the managers of Starbucks, they are very particular about when that loading occurs because of the nature of, you know, they want a, a efficient operation on-site as possible. So, they are very adamant that, you know, when those deliveries are, they're a high-end enough user that they can dictate that with their suppliers, and we are, we're confident that it won't have any impact to the uh, to the operations of the site. With that, I'll, I'll happily answer any other questions, um, and uh, thank you for your time.
Any other questions? Mr. Dabine?
How many parking places do you have here? It's probably in here somewhere, but I don't know where it's at.
Parking, we have, we have thirty-one parking spaces and seven bank spaces, and that's a great point. Um, Starbucks operationally needs a minimum of twenty, um, and thirty is usually the high-end of what they go operationally. So, we're, we're one space over there, their optimal high-end of, of parking, because they have a, a mix of online pickup spaces, a mix of the drive-through users, and a mix of the uh...
So you said you had thirty-one?
We have thirty-one parking spaces on-site.
Okay.
And then we have seven bank spaces in the rear, uh, which gives us the thirty-eight required.
All right. What's the possibility, just, I mentioned to Jonathan, all the other commissioners, of extending, instead of having where people start pulling in, up and looking at the diagram, or having them go all the way to the back of the parking lot? Hold on a second, I think he's gonna find it on the computer. Go, go all the way, instead of coming at the uh, proposed trash masonry, go all the way to the back, to the back of the lot?
Yep, so, so at that point, the stacking would impact those ten spaces that we have in the rear, as well as the uh, the circulation that we have for the...
How many spaces would it affect?
Ten spaces.
How many?
Ten.
How many people co- go inside to a Starbucks? I guess that's my question. I, I don't frequent them, so I don't know.
Um, a- again, the optimal is twenty to thirty spaces, so we would be within that range, but I think there is a limit, and Jonathan, correct me if I'm wrong, with the number of bank spaces that we can request. And then additionally, I don't know how we would bank them, because we have to show that we have access to those spaces in the future.
It was just thought, okay, I'm good.
Yeah, so in the event that there is a backup, is there a plan to address that at the time? I mean...
If there's a backup of over thirty, thirty cars on-site?
I mean, I hear what you're saying. You're, you're saying adequately, you, there's enough space to support the number of vehicles through that drive-through.
Yes.
And what I'm hearing from the board up here and to the public is, we can't have it spill over into twenty-three. So in the event that there is a backup, I mean, is, could you come up with some kind of plan to, I mean, have the manager go out there? You know, at Chick-fil-A, they've got different people routing out there, directing vehicles? I mean, hopefully that doesn't happen, and you can... Service all the vehicles, but I'm, what, what I'm hearing from everyone is that it cannot back up on twenty-three. That is just a disaster waiting to happen.
Yeah, so, um, what we're showing is, oh, it, you know, in the worst-case scenario, before you get to the, the right-of-way, over double what the ordinance requirement is, so, I mean, we're, we're talking an absolute...
Right.
Like Armageddon of everybody needing coffee at this...
Okay, so then you would never have to access that plant. So that's what I'm saying. You could have a plan in place.
There could be a plan in place where...
And then you would never have to access it.
People would pull into parking spaces and get their coffees brought out.
Right, but I also heard that there was a, a commitment made that it would never, the sister Starbucks wouldn't encroach on twenty-three mile, and it did.
Yep, a- and I guess, I, I guess to, to answer your question, the plan would be, is if that were the case, that the other Starbucks on twenty-three has a single one-way lane, we show a full tw- twenty-four-foot wide path, we could double-stack it if we needed to, and get to forty-five cars as a emergency situation.
Anybody else? Mr. Carr?
Yeah, just one. Uh, first, um, I actually wanna commend you on taking notes and responding, because very few do that. So, I just want you to know that from my perspective, uh, I thought, you know, I, I appreciate that.
I even wrote your guys' names down, so I'd remember who answered the question.
No, but I mean, I, I mean that sincerely, because again, we get a lot that doesn't understand. I mean, at, at the end of the day, this is a, a discussion, right? We're here to enforce the ordinances, and like, in regards to stack of lanes, I mean, you're, you're at the ordinance, so I mean, at this point, we're just having a discussion, trying to understand from lessons learned. But my question is, is um, with the stack-up, it still goes back to the same comment I had. I, I agree that you, you, you complied with the ordinance. I, I think, you know, that we can't argue with that. But I, I still ask the same question of, why, logistically, uh, and I'm trying to figure out a compromise, you know, um, but just why, logistically, why split the parking and have it divided by a drive-through lane? I, I still, to me, it, it just makes more sense to take the drive-through lane running all the way to the north, so people come all the way around, it gives you larger stack-up, and it also, again, keeps the parking, for people who are parking adjacent to the building, so they don't have to cross the drive-through path with vehicles. I, I, I'm just trying to understand that part of the, of the site layout, because to me, it just makes more sense, and it achieves both, and it, it's no different of a cost perspective, because you're still putting in thirty-one parking spaces, and you're still putting out asphalt in the parking lot.
Yep, i- it's more about how the um, site circulation would be. In order to have the, the stacking go all the way to the north, we would end up having to have those ten spaces be, be dead-end spaces, or something along that nature, which um, operationally Starbucks doesn't like, because they don't want trucks and people backing up on their site. They like a fluid uh, path around. And generally, those spaces in the rear are designated for employees already. Um, so, you know, we, we're gonna have um, a handful of employees working there, told to park back there, so they're not crossing the uh, the pathway. I mean, ideally, the twenty-one spaces we have in fronting the building, you know, those would, would never be completely full. But again, the ordinance requires us to have a certain number of parking spaces, and by extending the lane back, we, we limit our ability to, you know, meet the ordinance intent for, for stacking. Because if we had to put in the bank parking in the rear, there are seven more spaces that we wouldn't be blocking to, to extend it back. And then, um, it, you know, by shifting everything closer, we were trying to keep a, a nice landscape buffer with the detention pond and everything away from the single-family homes that we directly abut. I know it's, you know, we have, like you said, we, we have residential to our west as well, but that's a very difficult site to ever develop, and probably never will. There's actually existing houses to the north there that we are being very conscious of, by keeping as much of the existing vegetation, as well as adding more vegetation up that way. So we're, we're trying to find a nice harmony of how far can we push the stacking? How far can we push the parking to the rear of the lot, while, you know, not encroaching right on the, the neighbor's backyard?
Yeah, I guess, everything you said didn't make sense to me, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Um, I don't think we're talking about going all the way to the north sideline. The, the footprint of where you're, where you're currently asphalting uh, is appropriate. I think, I think number one, I think the odds of you ever putting in those seven banked parking spots is probably never.
Yeah, I would agree.
Let's be realistic, right? I mean, this isn't our first rodeo. We, we've had people bank, they don't, they don't do it. I mean, and so, I don't foresee that ever being triggered, so, but even set that aside, I, I...
The ordinance makes us keep those accessible, though, with the two-way.
I'm just saying, I mean, we're, we're not asking for you to increase your footprint size of impervious, you know, paving. We're just, all I was saying was, why divide the parking, why divide the two parking areas? That's all, and then you just stack it all the way from that north twenty-four foot, so you just go twenty foot, foot all around, but uh, but ultimately, it's your decision.
It just comes with the, the dead-end, because by extending that lane north, those ten spaces would be dead-end. And then Starbucks operationally, with their delivery and the trash truck um, circulating the site, they wanna have a path where they don't have to go through the uh, the drive-through lane and, and pass the menu board and everything, so, that's why...
Yeah, I just, I thought the deliveries were off-hours, so...
They are, but a- again, it's more Starbucks doesn't want them to go through the drive-through lane. We work, Jonathan can attest, our original plan didn't show a, a loop back there, and Starbucks required us to make it a full circulation at the top without, um, so, the delivery trucks could circulate without using the bypass lane, so...
Okay, understood.
Yeah.
No worries, thank you.
Anybody else?
If, if I could make a comment, please?
Sure.
My name is Joe Pelusi, and I'm with Veris Development, I'm the developer for this site. Um, obviously, you're all very much aware that we've inherited a bit of a problem, which is totally understandable, with the existing Starbucks facility that's just west of I-94, that you've talked about all night. This, this site is just grossly underserving the market, and gro- grossly um, just, just doesn't have the right flow, any parking, there's seven parking spaces, four of which are blocked by the drive-through lane if it's stacked. And as, as uh, Jonathan here, Reed, has explained, the stacking distance from the, from the point of the window to the point of the right-of-way, um, we're, we're, we have extreme condition of more stacking capability. So, we, we completely understand the concerns of safety, right? I mean, we, we develop these Starbucks locations throughout the state, and I wanna, I wanna make sure that you understand, as you've mentioned, that someone stood here before you, um, we have, we had nothing to do with that location, we are not the developers of that location. Ironically, we developed the shopping center immediately to the west of that location, which I'm sure you're aware of, um, as far as how that's designed and how well that was done. So, I, I just want you to know that we're here as owner-developers, we take pride in what we do, we retain ownership of our buildings. So when Reed mentioned about products and the intent of your ordinance and, and, and the right products, we have um, every intent to meet your, the intent of your ordinance in terms of building products. Because we have long-term ownership, and we obviously want them to be as maintenance-free as possible. So we appreciate your time tonight, and we, we hear you loud and clear, and um, we're, we're, we're here to do the right job. Thank you.
Thank you. I would entertain a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to postpone the uh, the public hearing that's closed. Postpone making a decision, giving the applicant up to six meetings to uh, to revise his drawings. And um, I know it's the cart before the horse, but possibly, I'm funded ZDA for the um, the variances that are being requested on the uh, landscaping, these uh, setbacks and the um, buffer zones. That'll make a motion to postpone.
Add a traffic study in there.
Yeah, and a traffic study.
Well, he has a list. The uh, the applicant has a list of things that um, that are in concern. Traffic study, there's twenty-foot poles, building materials, um, he has a list of things that need to be resolved. It gives him an opportunity to do so up to six meetings.
Thank you. We have a motion by Mr. Lebel, supported by Mr. Miller. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the motion passes. Regular agenda, is Mr. Lebel?
Thank you for your time, guys.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item A is Take Five Oil Change, Site Plan 2024-10. It's a special land use, C2.57 acres, on the north side of twenty-one, twenty-three mile road, west of Grashit Avenue. The parcel ID is 15-09-17-351-008. The address is 2737523 Mile Road. Uh, the public hearing was um, was closed, and it was postponed, um, giving the applicant to um, time to make adjustments to the drawings. He has achieved, everything has been um, requested. The applicant is here this evening. If you'd like to review what you have changed in your drawings, that'd be great, and that way we can um, make a decision.
Thank you.
Good evening. Um, so there was a major concern with the traffic from Mayor um, coming out and onto Grashit Road, and with the entrance that we had right there in that private lane. Um, so we actually made that an exit... Um, so we actually made that an exit-only and created an additional entry driveway, um, approximately thirty, forty feet north of there, um, so that alleviates that traffic. And we also, um, provided signage, um, to keep the, you know, to direct the traffic and keep everybody safe. That southeast driveway is now in right turn only, and it's an exit-only, and there will be signage to indicate that, and there'll be signage outside to indicate, do not enter, so there won't be, um, any conflict with traffic that way. In addition, the entrance that we added, um, you know, is, is going to be merged in with the, with the standard queuing lane, and we'll have signage there, um, you know, to yield, um, you know, just to keep everybody safe. And that is the site plan. The building, uh, we had a discussion earlier about the painted, I think they, they still had some trim that was painted, um, that will be integrated material, so there won't be a, an issue there. And the bollards, um, I think you received our, our latest submittal, that we're gonna use plastic sleeves and inner tone color, so...
Thank you, any questions by the commission, Mr. Demick? Mr. Renault?
Actually, I just wanted to say thank you, uh, you listened to what we had to say, and you addressed all of it, so, thank you very much.
Mr. Carr?
Uh, yeah, I think you addressed everything, uh, the only thing that I did see was that the bollard detail still hasn't changed from a depth, uh, depth perspective, and it still says it's painted.
Yeah, there is, there is a later submittal that I have, I can, I actually have a copy of that, I can give that to you as well.
Okay, yeah, 'cause that was the only thing I saw that wasn't addressed, it seemed like everything else was, so, thank you.
You okay? Mr. Jaworski?
No, it appears that he's addressed all of our concerns, so, I'm good, thank you.
Mr. Klonowski?
Yeah, I'm fine, thank you.
Mr. Leonard? Mr. LaBelle?
Nothing else, thank you.
I'm all set, too, thank you very much.
Thank you.
With that, I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve, um, item A, Take Five Oil Change, Site Plan 2024-dash-one-zero. The applicant has addressed and cooperated with the township immensely, and, um, he has, um, there is no impact to any other businesses in the area, with that, I'd like to make a motion to approve.
We have a motion by Mr. LaBelle, supported by Mr. Renault, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes, thank you. Presentations, reports, and discussions, uh, planner's report? Ms. Osborne?
Just a quick update, we are still working, uh, to bring you, uh, your next memo for discussion on the fuel stations, so you can look forward to that in October, and we hope to see many of you at MAP next week, it's gonna be a great time. Giffords is doing a, uh, social Thursday night, so look for that at the Lit. And I'm, Jill's got two sessions, I'm sorry, I don't know exactly what days and what times, um, but look for her, and then my session is on Friday morning, so, it'd be great to see you.
Thank you. Jonathan, you have anything?
Uh, I don't have, just echo what Stephanie said, we also have the, uh, there was some discussion on the marijuana ordinance that we'll have some draft language for you in October on that as well.
Is there any way we could also do a, a brick ordinance on houses? I mean, is there any possibility of that, at least the front of them?
Uh, something can be researched.
Thank you. Demick?
I have none, thank you all of the commissioners for your support and diligence work on the items that come in front of us every two weeks. Thank you very much from myself and the township board.
Thanks, Mr. Renault?
Actually, I just wanted to address a comment that Mrs. Young made earlier today about the electric cars and paying taxes. You've never paid the registration fees on one of those. They run two to three times what you would normally pay for your license renewal, so, we do pay, just in a different format.
Mr. Carr? Mr. Jaworski?
I have one thing, um, it was brought up this evening about, uh, zoning ordinance changes and listening to those. Um, I do have to agree with the public that it should be brought to our attention by multiple folks, folks that it's impacted, not just one, so I will have to agree with that.
Uh, nothing from me.
Mr. Leonard?
Uh, just a, a question on the Starbucks with the Nitschah, um, I'm not sure if it, if it was on the plan, did, the thickness, we always look for what the thickness of the product is, was that brought up tonight?
No.
And if not, can Jonathan, uh, pass it on to them to have them note that with the plan revisions?
Yeah, I, I can do that, and also, you know, I, I think we inadvertently included the wrong, uh, the previous elevations. Uh, they did do a revised set, um, for some reason, the older one was included in your plans, but we do have the most recent ones, and we'll make sure we send them out to you.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. LaBelle?
Looking for volunteers for pre-planning, Mr. Leonard? Mr. Ray? Mark? Mr. Renault?
Okay, I, I don't have anything either. Brian will do it?
Mr. Carr?
I'll do that, no, I'll do it in the morning, remind you. Okay, number eleven is adjournment, I will make a motion to adjourn at eight fifteen. Yeah, motion by Mr. Miller, supported by Mr. Renault, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.